Yeah, I mean, we're just working on the punch list. We have one final submission for the whole neighborhood.
Would not the letter of credit almost cost what this is gonna?
Not when you're in the bank.
Right.
Good point. Make a motion to approve.
First and second all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
We have a request for extension of surety. It's C 2005-6 entrance construction for lot six, North Work Industrial Park, section three. At 11200 Industrial Park Drive for Hucat Holdings LLC by Evan Beck, managing member. We're holding $14,201 surety in escrow guaranteeing the drive completion. They've had two years. They're requesting one additional year at the same amount. The surety expires November 19th of 2022, and the county engineer has signed off on the dollar amount on that as well.
All good, Bobby?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the extension?
Second.
Have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
We have a request for reduction of surety. It's Chatham Place Subdivision by R.A. McGillam Custom Homes LLC by Ron McGillam, owner. Holding $42,377.46 for street and drainage, requesting one additional year at $17,684.80. Letter of credit expires November 4th, 2022, and the county engineer has signed off on the dollar amount.
Okay. All good, Bobby?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve the reduction of surety?
Second.
Have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Woodfield Four Subdivision, Woodfield Development LLC by Steve Blankenberger, the owner. We're holding the letter of credit in the amount of $18,991.50 for sidewalk construction. They're requesting one additional year at a reduced amount of $14,239.50. They had seven years, and this letter of credit expires November 4th, 2022. County engineer has signed off on the dollar amount.
All good.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
We have a request to rezone, PCR 2209, Indiana Valley LLC by Mansour Con, member. Rezone 9.161 acres on the south side of Stall Road, 660 feet west of Stall and Upworth Road from R1A. One family zoning district and C4 General Commercial to... R2B, a PUD, multi-family planned unit development. Parts of Lot 27 and 28 in Sweat Sub, Ohio Township, 26 and 9. It was advertised in the standard July 28th of 2022, and the APC gave a six to one positive recommendation at their meeting held on September 12th of 2022.
Glenn Merritt with Cash Wagner. I don't have anything to add. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions from anyone? Okay. Questions?
Ordinance number would be 23.
Thank you. I suppose I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I have a petition to rezone, remonstrators or against?
Are there any remonstrators? Anyone for or against the project? Let the record show no one raised their hand or stood up.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-23?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Thank you very much.
Um, we have street construction plans on the agenda for Stall Road Apartments, PUD. This is something that's been continued several times. Last time was the September 24th commissioners meeting, and I don't know. I do not have a signature on that request.
Yeah, I had a preliminary layout that Glenn did send to me. I forwarded that to the E MPO, and I'm waiting on their review.
I knew I tried to touch base last week to see where we were at. They, I guess, the only thing I wanted to say, like I said, everything's been held up for the traffic study. They come back and wanted a passing blister put in on Stall Road. And the width of the passing blister that's required interferes with OHA's entrance on the other side of the road. And we need to shorten it to fit in that particular space that's over there. And that's why I turned in the layout to Bobby last week, trying to get feedback to make sure that was going to be something that was okay. So that's kind of what we're waiting on. I don't know if...
Yeah, we're just waiting on that review. I haven't got anything from them yet. I mean, as far as my review, I'm waiting on their comments.
I didn't know for sure if it was something in-house that could be approved and contingent on his review later or not. I know we've done that sometimes, but that's completely up to the board.
I recommend...
It's a private street. It's all, you know, internal. The only improvements are on Stall Road. How is it right away?
You recommend table, Bobby? I make a motion to table to the October 24th meeting.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Bobby, I got one question. You haven't heard anything from E MPO?
No, I checked again today to see where we're at.
Okay. If for some reason we have to table it again, that's I'll just call beforehand.
Yeah, I'll get with you.
Hopefully they get back with us because they've been not very responsive to Lockmula Group on the traffic study. That's why this whole thing's been pushed back multiple times.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Okay. Our last item is PP 2216, White Oak Hills. Petition owner is Jeremy K. McKeithen and D V R. McKeithen. Approximately 20.09 acres located on the south side of Millersburg Road, about a half mile east of the, from the intersection of Millersburg and Spring Lake Drive. Being lot two in H and L Farms Minor, subdivision number three, as reported in 2022 R. 002839 in the Warrick County Corps Office, Boone Township, 19, 5 and 8. This is advertised in the standard September 29th of '22, and they're requesting no improvements to Millersburg Road.
Jared Memmering with Morley representing the McKeithens.
Bobby, you good?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
That's all for the area planning commission.
Thank you, Bobby.
Make a motion.
Next order of business is the approval of minutes from the September 26th, 2022 meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Next order of business is our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have on the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda include the county auditor claims voucher report date 9/28 through 10/11/2022 and peril date of 10/10/2022. The declaration of surplus status for county highway vehicle 2005 International 4300 service truck with a VIN number ending in H108517. We have the clerk's report from August 2022 and a fixed asset notification for a DJI Mavic drone. All of those are your consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay. The next item that I have on the agenda is an approval for the meeting time change for the December 28th meeting to 12:00 PM, meeting from 4:00 PM.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Can we make sure downstairs gets that notification?
Yes, sir. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Next order of business is the appointment of a wing township.
So, well, that was, I don't know, Todd, have you had any information on that? Mr. Jenkins? Apologize, I thought.
I do not.
So it's the commissioner's responsibility to make this appointment because...
That they can see.
That they can see.
William Jenkins...
Williams?
Has agreed to, has contacted the commissioners following up to letters that were sent to the community, and he is interested, and he has been working with Chad as to what those pieces are and working on getting bonded.
Understands the responsibilities.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. So Heather, do you alert him to the fact that he's been appointed?
And Chad?
Yes.
Next order of business is our county administrator.
There's two items, Mr. President. The first one is approval of some contracts for economic development. Warrick Bucks Program. I don't know if Mr. Rowley wanted to fill in on any of it. I guess not.
I can just answer questions.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, but two agreements for Warrick Bucks, community card agreement, buy one, get one pre-campaign agreement, ARPA funding that has approved an effort of Warrick Bucks to help promote shopping local and buying local small businesses here in Warwick County. Everything looks good and everything is in place. Your approval would allow those two contracts to be entered into.
I don't have to. Steve, can you come up here and give us a few bullet points? I'm going to set my timer.
Sure.
We have, we have a dinner, all of us.
Okay.
People in the room, so we're trying to speed up.
Todd kind of hit on it really quick, but it was one of the programs that was approved and funded through the commissioners for ARPA funds. It's a smart, supports small businesses. We have a lot of tools to support big businesses, manufacturing, growth, tax phase in and other incentives. This one is, ARPA is to hit businesses that were impacted by the COVID pandemic and also rolling into that. You've got inflation and rising costs and supply chain stuff. So it's really to support small businesses. It's a shop local, shop work program. These are two agreements with the company. We're moving forward to do that. They are e-gift cards. We have vetted the program. We've met with the CEO. We've talked to other communities around the state and the country about this program. We've also vetted it with a lot of local merchants here in our community. We've met with the Chamber of Commerce, we've Boonville Now, Boonville Merchant Association, Historic Newburgh to make sure our merchants, you know, would benefit from this programming. And so they're really two real short agreements, two pages and three pages or something like that, just outline the parameters of the program that we're moving forward with. We are in complete control of ending at any time. They have backend analytics, so we can track it and judge if there's any tweaks we want to make to it. We feel very comfortable with it, and these two agreements are what we need to get started. It's good timing with the holidays and shopping and keeping dollars here in Warwick County.
But if a customer wishes to buy a gift card, this program gives them the second card for free.
Gives them some buying power and that they can use only in businesses that are in the community, businesses that have signed up. You have to be able to accept the MasterCard because the programs run through MasterCard. Similar, if you walk into a CVS or something, you may buy a Visa card or a MasterCard.
Stephen, how will they buy these cards and where will they go to get them?
So they will go online. We will certainly promote it out forward with media, through our site, through the chamber and through social media. They are also able to, merchants are able to put a link on their card or even within the store. We plan on doing some window clings and stuff like that so that the education piece is out there for merchants and for people walking into, into shops. Hopefully it'll get some of our residents to try some new businesses here in Warwick County and those businesses to pick up long-term customers.
Well, I'm glad you came up to speak a little bit about it, Steve, because I first heard about it, and I think it was one of our economic development meetings, and I just thought it was a great idea how to, one, just one small way to help support, you know, our local businesses. So thank you very much for spearheading that because I think it was your brainchild.
We're excited about it.
Yeah, so thank you.
Steve, do you want the contracts in the name of economic development?
So if they want to approve economic development signing it, that's fine. If they want to sign it, that's fine too, but I just wanted approval so that we can move forward.
Careful signs it.
Okay.
So is that, is that a motion on...
Yes, approve both of those contracts to be entered into either by yourselves or economic development.
I mean, we've stood here and approved it, so it's the same thing as signing, so I'm fine with whoever.
Okay, I can sign those tomorrow and get them executed.
Make a motion to approve the agreements.
Second.
First and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks for keeping it short, Steve. I'm working on it.
And also, Mr. President, the one item that isn't on the agenda that needs to be is a proposed amendment and restated emergency medical service agreement with Ascension St. Vincent Warrick EMS. You've got the proposed draft. This is trying to be fast-tracked to some degree to get, get it to Ascension. I see Tony's here. Tony doesn't even have this yet. It's effective January 1st. It provides for the increased number of six ambulance units and their locations. It's the same contract for the most part as what currently exists. I would note, we have two years left on the existing contract, but in recognition of the significance that Ascension St. Vincent Warrick EMS plays in our community, this board is willing to consider modifying that agreement early. The one particular edit that needs to be run by Ascension is the increase in pay rate for those services. They're requesting 1.5 million from the current rate. This proposal suggests bumping that up to a million beginning January 1, 1.25 million in year two, and 1.5 million in year three, and 1.5 million for the remaining term of the agreement of 10 years. That's slightly different than the draft from Ascension St. Vincent, but if you'd approve the draft or any version of it, then I would get it submitted to their attorney tomorrow and get some feedback. Those are primarily the significant edits to the draft for your consideration. 3.2 is the pay rate. Everything else, I think, is pretty straightforward. It's the pay rate that we need some feedback from Ascension.
So acknowledging that we're in a bit of a hurry here this evening, I would like to say a couple of things. Hopefully there's some people listening online here that the important part of this is that there are many times the EMS is dispatched, and the five ambulances that we have are busy and on calls and unavailable. So this is critical, literally, to life-saving opportunities. And we do have an existing contract. However, we need to put this six ambulance in place, and we can't do it for free. So that's what this is all about, and... So we're just approving the draft?
The draft to submit to Ascension. Particularly what we need to make sure of is that the proposed increase in pay rate is sufficient for Tony to move forward to get all of his personnel in place by January 1. And because of the increase in rate, just proposing the step up in year one and two and three just to make sure that you've got the funds and you can get the council approval and appropriation.
Tony, do you have anything to add?
And mind you, some of that stuff, he's just heard some of that stuff. So be aware that he hasn't probably had the chance to digest some of that.
Thank you, Todd. Tony O'Neil with Warwick EMS.
I think the only thing that I'd probably like to say is we're really getting into a time period that I don't think we can meet the January 1 deadline by trying to get everyone hired. Even if the contract was approved tonight, the process of getting a new associate's approval, the request for a new associate's approved takes several weeks, and there's a shortage on medics and EMTs right now. We've got an open medic position that's been out there for about three, four months now that we haven't filled. So I'm afraid that January 1 may, may just be too tight for us now. And I think that the news station is not going to be ready until March 1st, so I would maybe propose that we move it back to March 1st.
Let's make it March.
And give us a little more lead time to, to look at the draft and, and some other things. As you shared, President Terry, the volume is continually increasing. If, if I had the means with the other truck and, and some personnel, I, I would try to put a 12-hour truck on just part-time right now, just to give us some time because I know especially down in the Ohio Township area, the crews are just running, running ragged down there. We're, we're running, we're running really, crews are maxed out at that time. So the faster we can do this, the better off I think we'd all be.
I think we, part of our vetting process has been to talk to other counties and what their EMS teams are up against, and it doesn't sound like it's a place to be in right now all the way around.
Yeah, Martin County, I think Martin County up by Vincent's just went to their commissioners and shut down the EMS service up there because they just couldn't operate anymore. So it's, EMS world right now is changing, and it's, it's challenging. So I just want to be fair to you guys. I just, I don't think we'll be ready by January 1, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to promise something that we can't deliver on to county officials. So if that's one amendment we could make, I think that would help us.
Certainly, Mr. President, you can approve the draft to submit to Ascension, and I can work with their attorney, and I already have an idea of how to work that.
Okay.
That would float the date to a later date and give you even more flexibility to be February 1 or March 1 or April 1 and prorating that first year's meeting.
This is maybe a step forward.
Yeah.
Saving lives needs to move quicker than what we can move, but this is a step forward, so.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the proposal.
That was the question I asked or had, would be proactive then, so, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft for council to present to Ascension attorney. Is that...
Nevermind. That's second. Yeah.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye. Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Tony, here's a hard copy. Take that, and I'll email that to Ms. Dudlow and you tomorrow morning.
Awesome.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Is that all, counsel?
Yes.
Next order of business is county grants development director.
You can tie me too. Debbie Bennett, stairs with County Grant Department. First item, easy, is a contract between the county and Elber, Town of Elberfell for $209,900, and that is the agreement of the award we made to Elberfell to hire an engineering firm to do a feasibility study. You just have to approve it.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, I'm going to start with the two county projects that are left for ARPA funding. The first project is for the county to pave the parking lot at the Warwick County Solid Waste. It's been 25 years since it's been paved, and it was recommended by the core group that we pay the amount of $258,042 from the county ARPA money, not competitive county ARPA funds, to pave the solid waste parking lot.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Next one is for the, a request for the county to replace the playground at the Newburgh Girl Softball Field, upgrade the wood park picnic tables to recycled rubber, and add three additional steel shade structures in the park with trash containers. Request was $262,929. The core group recommended $250,000. County ARPA funds.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
First and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, I'll start through the competitive. If you want to get to a point we need to stop, we'll just stop. I pulled the one that I know is one of the most important, and that is the Pitch and Township Regional Sewer District. The district needs to move ahead with replacing the grinders that are out in the system right now. At least it'll give them a place to move forward then with the engineering study to do the repair and rehabilitation of the wastewater treatment plant. There are approximately 168 customers, and they need the grinders right away. They requested $500,000. Core group recommended $500,000. This is from the competitive funding.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
The next one is the Rivertown Trail Bridge Project in Newburgh. Their, the current historic Bonner Bridge was relocated and made a part of the Newburgh Rivertown Trail in 2009. This trail, this bridge is used by a lot of pedestrians and is one of the top picturesque places in Warwick County and serves thousands of trail daily users. The bridge has exposed areas. Its remote location made it a target of vandalism and graffiti. It also crosses a floodplain area and is occasionally submerged. This project will include redesigning the bridge deck for easier replacement and maintenance of the bridge deck boards. Request was $175,000 matched with $25,000. The core recommended $175,000.
You want to make a motion on that one?
I make a motion to approve the Rivertown Trail request.
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is Warwick County Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity has been building partnerships with USDA Rural Development to serve the low and very low families by building three and four-bedroom, two-bath, energy-efficient for affordable homes since 2002. They're requesting $225,000, matching with $2,016,000 in USDA loan to assist 12 families in funding and building a home through self-help, self-help housing program.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
The next request is from the Town of Tennyson. They requested $30,000 matched by $3,360 to do rehabilitation to their existing town hall and their community center. The upgrades would include carpet replacement. I think that's it. Oh, and to paint also.
Make a motion to approve?
What was the amount, then?
$30,000.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
The next is Warwick Resources. The Warwick Resource Center provides numerous services to the citizens of Warwick County. The services include a food pantry, diaper bank, emergency clothing bank, shower facilities, laundry business center, as well as financial assistance. They're asking for $17,000 to be matched by $13,000 of their own to purchase food, diapers, supplies, and equipment for day-to-day operations for the next 12 months.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
The next is the Tri-State Food Bank. They're requesting $24,000 matched by $8,002, supply backpack food bags to children in grades K through 12 who rely on the free lunch program. Get food so they have reliable access to nutritious meals and snacks when they go home for the weekend.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
The next is Boonville Now. Boonville Now is requesting $30,000 to help fund a, I think this is wrong. To help fund a Boonville Now director. The city of Boonville will be matching it with another $30,000 for total $60,000. It will help increase the visibility of Boonville and Warwick County to the tri-state area and will bring much economic, much needed economic boost and potential employment. Hiring an executive director will show the Indiana Main Street organization the commitment of Boonville Now, Warwick County, and the city of Boonville to acquire money through the Indiana Main Street program. Do you want to table them? Just tell me.
Table that one, please.
Okay. Set.
Do we need to make a motion, second?
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Okay, the next is for Wesk. Wesk would like to stock their, requesting $12,000 to stock the freezer with frozen meat and food to distribute to the patrons of the Warwick Ecumenical Soup Kitchen to supplement their meals prepared at home.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
What was that amount?
$12,000.
That was quest, right?
Yes.
I have a first and a second all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And the last one is the Boonville Country Club. They are requesting $47,949 to be matched with $5,000. And the last one is the Boonville Country Club. They are requesting $47,949 to be matched with $5,000 to put a cart barn renovation plan out at the Boonville Country Club. Basically, this will be having a wash station and coverage for the carts. They were having trouble during the, during COVID. They couldn't open and when they did, they didn't have enough staff members to keep them clean. By doing this, it will provide a healthy environment for cleaning, sanitizing and storing of golf carts after the use of members and the public.
I make a motion to table.
My second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I think we got through this.
Thank you. That's a long time.
All right, I'm out of here. One thing, Terry.
Go ahead, Bobby.
We had a road. I know, and I don't know why, but we can get into that later too. But I had a road use agreement, I believe, Ms. Williams, here with BMB. In order to water has proposed to put a water line down Martin Road between Heritage and Sharon, I believe. And the current proposal is underneath the pavement. And I guess the original plan was outside of the pavement. Then it got put back in the pavement. And so we're trying to, I just need an explanation of what needs to be done exactly. How long you think it'd be? One lane closure, is that correct? And how many cuts do you think were going to be made in the roadway? Well, there's a.
State your name and position.
My name's Jim Williams with BMB.
Thank you, Jim.
We're proposing to relocate an existing water line in under the pavement by use of horizontal drilling. And that's about 3,000 feet between Sharon and Heritage. By horizontal building, drilling would only be doing bore pits every 300, 600 feet, depending on strategic location for connection to cross streets or service connections. Initially, the line was designed outside of the pavement. Do you know why it got moved back under? Limited right-of-way. There's several utilities on the, on their proposed route, the original engineer's route. And on the opposite side, there's a gas conflict. And by putting under the road, we can avoid several of the utilities. So our issue is, first of all, we usually require, we, we want them to be outside of the pavement as much as possible and only half the cut pavement as necessary. I don't know how many cuts it, you said it bore pits, but you also have connections, right? Service connections? There'd be, I think there's five on there? Five. Five or six service connections. And then there'd be the cross street connections. And what we try to do would be minimize the number of, of connections and try to utilize service point, points and cross streets. I tried to reach out to the designer to get some of this information, but I haven't gotten that back yet, so. So basically, you would keep one lane open during this process if you horizontal? Yeah, we're, we're asking for a road closure to try to maintain local traffic, emergency access and school bus. Because we would try to limit our construction in one lane, but there'd be occasional times we'd have to put a, a dump truck in adjacent lane and we would accommodate the local traffic and of course, emergency vehicles for that. And this road closure would be held on? I originally said two and a half months, just because of the time of year we're looking at is, you know, holiday season, potential severe weather. Our construction estimate's not that long of a duration, but I want it to be conservative in our timeline there.
How, how many total linear feet from Sharon to?
It's approximately 3,000, 2,800 and some feet. 2,800, 3.
So are some of, some of the housing developments that's to that road are basically U-shaped cul-de-sacs? And is that they're only in and out?
No, there's a, there's other ways in and out through there, I believe. My concern was just the length, the length of the closure and being able to have local access. I was hoping they could flag traffic through, so the majority of the time. And then what kind of, how many cuts there were going to be, depending on how, how many areas that they were going to have to repair.
So what are we, being asked to appropriate a road use agreement?
No, this is a working road right-of-way utility program. And with the road closure request, normally we would do it in our office, but when it's a request of this nature, we, we bump it up to the board. This is, like I said, it's a, it's a long period of time that the road will be closed. And I would like to make sure every other item is fully looked at as far as why it has to be under the pavement.
Yeah, why, why cannot this not be born on the, in the easement or the utility easement on the side of the road?
It's just so congested with all the other utilities, with the existing water line that's there, the cable, the gas lines, the telephone lines. It's just, it's not just one cable anymore. It's two or three and.
I don't know. I just, I, I saw what happened to Fuquay Road. I'm not saying American Water didn't do it, but just the potholes and connection points inside that road took a new road and made it, made it look like it's 10 years old. So I'm, I just, I just have a problem with this right now, the way it's presented, so. I, I mean, I, I can, I can make a motion to table, but.
I'll, I'll add my two cents, your district, so I would lean to your decision. However, albeit 25 years ago, I lived down here, so I am familiar with the area and, and just I guess I agree with Bobby. I would like to see if all other options were considered.
I, I'd like to make a motion to table and give maybe Bobby and you guys a chance to communicate a little bit more and see if we can come to a different conclusion. So I make a motion to table.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero. Thanks, this is our copy.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I'll call, try to set up something for this week. Thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioners, any other business?
I just have one real thing here. I just, I want to acknowledge a receipt of a, a letter addressed to me. It says, Mr. Sailor, the homeowners of Bellevue or Bell River Drive in Newburgh want to say thank you to the members of Warwick County Highway Department for their job repairing streets, seams recently. Working with Mr. Howard, Mr. Miller and the repair crew has been a very pleasant experience with excellent results. You know, when, when you get these kind of letters and thank you, we don't get a lot of thank you's a lot of times. I just wanted to acknowledge Bobby and his crew publicly and, and for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And we posted that for the rest of the crew as well.
That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Bobby, do you want, you want this?
So. You know, Bobby, if, if you just, if like you get.
It shows the eight and quarter line here.
Yep.
And then it shows it here.